I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The light schedule tonight, we have a couple of announcements to go through. I will try to get through them quickly, but before I do, would everyone please join me in a brief moment of silence for firefighter Menard for the Worcester Fire Department? Thank you. The agenda for this evening. We have the minutes of the special meeting from October 16th, not a special meeting, on the 16th, the minutes of the regular meeting from November 5th, community relations announcements in open forum. There are no appointments or resignations. We have a 6:45 PM Public Safety Building Committee, a 7:15 Hazard Mitigation Plan. Then there's nothing on the new business. We have one item under old business, which is the LNG Committee Post Agreement Request List. And then that's literally it until we get to the town administration report, if there is one.
There is not.
There is not. And then we will adjourn to our executive session. We will come out of executive session simply to take care of any business that needs to be executed from executive session and/or to return. So that being said, the first item on the agenda, the minutes of October 16th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Minutes of the regular meeting of November 5th.
I missed that one, so if someone else wants to go.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 5th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries three in favor, two in tensions. We'll move on now to community relations announcements in open forum. We'll start off with the announcements. If you can run through those. Mark your calendars. Household hazardous waste and electronics collection, Saturday, December 7th, 2019, from 9:00 AM till 1:00 PM. Casella Waste Services Facility at 165 Barefoot Road, across from the landfill. Materials that will be accepted are oil-based paint, pesticides, herbicides, cleaning products, household batteries, thinners, strippers, removers, solvents, acids, bases, automotive, oil, antifreeze, gasoline, stains, preservatives, mercury, fluorescent lights, and photochemicals, small electronics, and yard wastes, such as leaves, brush, or shrubs. Small appliances are $20 each, such as computer monitors, refrigerators, dehumidifiers, televisions, air conditioners, water coolers, or freezers. Household hazardous waste event fees, $30 per half car includes 25 pounds or less of household hazardous waste. Excuse me. $50 per full car, greater than 25 pounds of household hazardous waste, $20 per unit for TVs, monitors, and refrigerants. Example, one half-car household hazardous waste plus one air conditioner and one computer screen would be 30 plus 20 plus 20, or $70. Materials that will not be accepted, no construction or demolition waste, no commercial waste, no recycling or cardboard, no propane tanks, no car or truck batteries, no bulky furniture or mattresses, no food or household trash, no latex paint, no car or truck tires, no metal, no asbestos, this is a long announcement, no asbestos PCBs, explosives, or shock-sensitive materials, ammunition, compressed gas cylinders, radioactive wastes, pathological wastes, infectious waste, or medicines.
No radioactive waste.
No radioactive waste, correct. And preferably, and preferably no infectious waste, yes.
Okay.
See, show up in public access channel 191 for more information. No pre-registration is necessary. Proof of residency will be required, such as a driver's license or current utility bill. If you have any questions about the event or acceptable materials, please call Casella Waste Services at 888-532-2735. There will be a waiting line. Your patience is appreciated. Other announcements. The Town of Charlton Senior Tax Work Off Program has new guidelines for 2020. The maximum of abatement is now $1,500. Current low-income guidelines from HUD, no asset requirements. This program gives qualifying seniors who are at least 60 years of age an opportunity to volunteer hours to municipal department, and in return, receive $1,500 in abatement on their property taxes. Income guidelines do apply. The program is funded for 20 participants. The program policy and application are available at the Charlton Senior Center and online at www.tanofcharlton.net. If you have questions, please call outreach coordinator Catherine Pariso at 508-248-2246 or director, director, Elaine Mataris at the Senior Center at 508-248-2231. There is a box in the town hall, as well as the police department and fire department, for donations of toys and crafts for the holidays for the children at UMass Medical's Child Life Services, which is a Level 1 Pediatric Trauma Unit. Any items with hair or fur cannot be donated. Shepherd Hill's 28th Annual Festival of Crafts, November 23rd, 2019, from 9:00 AM till 4:00 PM, Shepherd Hill Regional High School. The town hall will be closed on November 27th and 28th for Thanksgiving. The Holiday Lighting Festival of the Lights Parade will be December 1st, 2019. 5:00 PM starts the music, and 6:00 PM starts the parade, and Santa Claus arrives. Bay Path Education Foundation presents Santa Claus Pancake Breakfast, which will be Saturday, December 7th, 2019, from 7:30 in the morning until 10:30 in the morning. This is at Bay Path Regional Vocational Technical High School. We're almost done with the announcements. Here's an extra special one. The Board of Selectmen would like to thank the following members of the Town Administrator Search Committee for your time and help during the process to ensure there are qualified candidates for the position of Town Administrator to interview that would fit the qualities needed here in Charlton. They are Frank Morrell, Henry Camasi, Terrick Markowski, Nicole Saretta, Stephen Coleman Jr., Kelly Zella, Rachel Hartwig, Michael Shaw, Ray Chalk, and Allison Lawrence. And I would say that the public has no idea the work that these people put in. We were informed tonight they met twice a week, I think. They went through the resumes, they met, and they basically made our lives a little easier for the process. And again, just a sincere heartfelt thanks to all of them for the time and energy that they put into this process.
Through the chair, some may be here tonight.
I think I see.
One left.
One left.
They all left, but it was a lot of work, a lot of energy. But I think the payoff is going to benefit the town, people who live here greatly.
Thank you.
Through the chair, do you have one more, just general announcement?
Sure.
If you would allow. So this Friday, the Dudley-Chelton Education Foundation is holding a fundraising event entitled Uncorked and Uncapped. Sounds fun. So it's this Friday, November 22nd, starts at 6:00. It's going to be at Nichols College, 124 Center Road in Dudley. And you can, I believe, purchase tickets online on their Facebook page, so, thank you.
I'm always disturbed when there's an alcohol thing. Everyone looks at me. I'm just throwing it out.
I didn't even glance in your direction.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that. Actually, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you wanted to make any announcement regarding what we just talked about at the 6:00 PM regarding the December 4th and 5th potential meetings?
Yeah. I was just going to notify FinCom that we're actually going to be 15 minutes ahead of them so they can come up.
Smooth.
Hold on one second. Oh, they want to be here for this. They're downstairs. All right. So Chief, do you have the dates?
On December 4th is the meeting, great 6:30 to 7:30. December 5th, the interviews from 6:00 to 10:00.
Yes, so the opportunity is going to happen on the 5th and 6th where...
Fourth and 5th.
Sorry, the 4th and 5th. I was listening to him, really. 4th and 5th, for town hall employees, department heads, and residents as well, to come to town hall in the evening and to be able to meet the finalists who have applied and are being considered for the position of Town Administrator, and also, if they so choose, watch publicly viewable interviews, the interview process. So it is, it's happening. We've reached that point, and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
So we have a 6:45, but we told FinCom it was 7:00.
Is it open forum?
Oh.
Is it?
We did. Is there anyone here for open forum? Okay.
Stefan. We would never forget it, but Stefan.
I have a couple hats on today as trustee of the Charlton Public Library. I know at one of your previous meetings, you commended the efforts of the library, but also commended the efforts of the folks here in the town hall for the Halloween event of all the little children coming through. I'd like to give special credit to Molly Garlic, who's our head of youth service and our assistant director, who has really organized us over the years in order to get these kids trick-or-treating through the library, but then wandering over here every single year. She does a great job at doing that. And while I'm at it, since you talked about your hours, I wanted to give people a heads up on what the library hours are next week, as the holiday is here. We are open Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We are closed Thursday and Friday, and then we reopen again on Saturday. Those are pretty much our normal hours. We're just taking the Thursday and the Friday off. Those are my two library things. Now I'm going to put on my personal citizen hat. This year it happened actually twice, on two occasions. When tax bills, real estate tax bills are due on a Friday, and it happened, I believe, in February and November 1st, the town hall is closed on that Friday. And I questioned the folks in the office, the directorial office, what happens to people who don't get their taxes in on that Thursday, the 31st, and they come in on Monday, they will be charged interest. And I thought that was kind of unfair to be penalized for the fact that the day that the taxes are due, this building is closed, so you cannot come in and pay that bill. Yes, you can pay online, you can pay ahead of time, but not everybody does that. Some people need to go right to that last minute. And I have two possible solutions to this problem. I know when the, in Massachusetts, when Patriot's Day is on a Monday, when the 15th, when taxes are due, we're given an extra day. I believe our town could decide to allow people to pay on that Monday, following the Friday, without penalty, and taxes would then, interest would start being accrued from Tuesday on. That would be, to me, I think, would be a simple solution. The second solution would be, on those years that a Friday is the tax due date, you could also have the employees in that office take, say, the Monday off or another day, and come in on that Friday and make the building available to people to come in. That sounds like it might be a little more complex to me. I know the interest is probably not very much, but I feel it's a service to penalize people not being able to come into this building because as select persons, you decided to close the buildings on Fridays. Doesn't happen very often. The next time, November 5th is, I mean, November 1st is, and I know you have nothing to do with selecting the dates, the state sets the dates that taxes are due for real estate, is 2024. And some of you may not be here at that point. Well, I should rephrase that. Some of you may not be select persons at that point.
Thank you.
I hope you are all here. But it's just something I wanted to bring up. I've got a list of the dates. It really does go far and wide that it doesn't happen too often, but when it does happen, I think there should be a solution, and possibly you folks could come up with a policy to deal with that kind of situation.
So if I may, while you're on that, Mr. Sage, so the decision, I agree with him, and I think, what's the big deal if we just, if we're closed, thinking of Monday, and do anything better from Tuesday on? Is that a decision that the Board of Selectmen makes, or is that the...
Through the chair. Could I make a suggestion? Probably before we ask this, I'll probably have the collector give us some information on it, because I believe the law, it's state law that governs the items that you're talking about, Stefan, and I believe also, is there a lockbox out for...
I don't know where and when.
I believe there is. So I think, I think before we make any decisions, it's a great thing that you brought it up.
Even though there's a lock, maybe a lockbox to put it in on Saturday or Friday, it doesn't get picked up until probably Monday.
But I don't know how they handle that, so I think that we need...
Right, and I wasn't asking us to make a decision, I was asking us to get the information so that we could fix it.
Yeah, so my suggestion through the chair would be to talk with the, have the interim town administrator contact the tax collector and go with the various issues that there are.
Yeah, so we will make sure that that is taken care of, one way or another. Whether it's a lockbox so they can drop it off on Friday, or whatever it's on Monday, we will address them.
And through the chair, to be honest with you, I mean, granted, I know a prior board made his decision, but I'd like to reassess the entire, once we hire a new town administrator, whether we should reopen on Friday altogether. I mean, I've never seen quantitatively what the benefits are of being closed on Friday, and I'm sure there are, especially for heating and cooling.
We actually had a report, and they actually, I don't know if it's still in our office, the Selectmen's office, but there was a report that actually showed the hard financial data, how much we spent per year.
I'd probably weigh that against what the qualitative impacts, just as like Stefan is saying, around potential community members. I'm not saying I'm leaning one way or another, but I think we should just have enough discussion at some point.
No, but I think we should get you that data, because if you have that information, it's going to help you and the board reach that conclusion.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And through the chair, again, not saying I'm in favor of it, but I think you have a valid point, and I think what we paid for oil back then was one of the reasons why we did what we did, so, you know, things are fluid, so.
I just think it's nice to look...
Frustrate, frustrate.
Yeah, just to reassess things every once in a while.
And one of the things to keep in mind when we did make that decision, Friday was a half a day for the employees because of, we were only open till noon time, because a lot of the employees are here with their boards and committees, you know, for other hours. So that was, when that decision was made, that was how, you know, one of the things that weighed in on.
Just something to think about in 2020, but Stefan, yeah, no, I think you're right on, and thanks for bringing that to us.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Stefan.
But you had something else?
No, that was those were the three, three things.
Thanks for bringing solutions as well. It's appreciated.
Yes, it's always nice.
My bad.
Thank you. 6:45 appointment, the Public Safety Building Committee, the Public Safety Building Committee...
The chief has something for...
What, other chief? I'm sorry, they say chief, it's like a doctor convention.
Chief, chief. You don't know which chief they're talking about.
Oh, fire chief.
Just one quick thing. We've been informed that Santa has once again agreed to help us out this year. It'll be December 1st, starting at 11 o'clock.
Are you going to drive, you're going to drive around town?
He will, Santa will.
He's going to drive around town, and more information as far as route, because we're always looking to refine the route, will be out on our social media page in the very near future.
Thanks for the update. Please thank Santa for this.
Yeah, and thank everybody that's involved.
So chief, both chiefs, right? Chief and interim T8 chief, can we get that also on the website, the data, the information?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
And through the chair, do we know, do they need help decorating this year for...
The truck?
Not the truck, the tree lighting, sorry.
The individual to contact would be Bud Harris. Or Ralph Harris Jr., whichever one you want to call him, bud.
I didn't know, I know.
I called him Ralph, and it was summarily corrected in about 13 seconds. Sorry.
So, all right, so I think the, there are no appointments or resignations. There you have our 6:45 Public Safety Building Committee. It's 6:55. Chief?
Public Safety Building Committee has asked to be placed on the board's agenda to update the board on the status of the project and to request a change in direction for the building project, makeup of the committee members, and direction regarding additional funds to complete the design of the building. And after they're complete here, there'll be a meeting of the finance committee.
So if you guys would be willing, the finance committee has asked if we could hold until 7 o'clock so that they can be here, and that you guys want to go through it at one time, because you'll have the Board of Selectmen and FinCom all together instead of doing it twice.
Well, good.
Rob looks happy. And Ralph, too.
Do you think, do you think Frank can do his thing?
It's five minutes they should be here.
No, I'm just wondering if Frank can do his thing in five minutes.
I know, can we do the hazard mitigation plan that quickly?
Oh, I was thinking Frank Lombardi from LNG. What's up to you?
He's at fully end.
Sorry, man, I tried.
He's not going, he's not going home.
I explained it at 7:15. I don't, I don't see Kyle Ekman, I don't know Trish Settles.
They're in the hallway? So they make them?
Yeah. Can I have a quick, do you think? I don't know, I mean...
I'm going to read it, but it seems very straight.
So if we can take theirs, then you guys still only have to do it one time?
Yeah. So we're going to do the 7:15?
Yeah, we do our 7:15 now at 6:55.
Okay. We've been notified that the FEMA Region 1 has completed its review of the Charlton Mass Hazard Mitigation Plan and found it meets the requirements of 44 CFR 201 pending adoption. The plan is not adopted within one calendar year of this notice. The jurisdiction must update the entire plan and resubmit it for review. The last few steps are as follows. The plan needs to be formally adopted by the Board of Selectmen during a public meeting. The signed certificate, along with a few date changes, will then go into the plan. The plan will be resubmitted to MEMA and FEMA for final approval, and we will see final approval from FEMA and Lieutenant Ekman and Trish Settles, who is from CMR PC, will be present to answer your questions.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Carl. So comments from you guys, or questions from the board, or what do you, what are our steps?
I can just kind of give you a quick, for you guys, for the audience, a quick overview of the hazard mitigation plan, the process. Asked for you essentially to approve it in its final form. I'll ask for you to submit a letter to, I think you probably have the verbiage on for the letter. If you don't, I've got a copy of what we would need to submit, is basically the cover page that says that. But just in short, for those of you who are not familiar with CMR PC, we're one of the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. We're one of 13 regional planning agencies in the Commonwealth. We perform planning services such as those that are needed for the city of Worcester and 39 surrounding communities in the southern peak areas of Worcester County, including the town of Charlton. I'm here today to request that the Board of Selectmen kind of formally adopt the National Hazard Mitigation Plan. We've been fortunate to receive a grant on behalf of 27 communities, including Charlton, to assist them in the development of the plan update. The town's last plan was update, was developed somewhere around 2012. It's since expired. We worked with a number of communities to individually update that plan. And so what we're talking about today is the last of those 27, actually, we're very excited about to be here tonight. A hazard mitigation plan is important for a town to have because it makes the town eligible for funds in the event that there is a disaster declaration in the state. The series of storms in last winter resulted in a declaration that made funds available. This plan identifies areas within the town where the town can be proactive to mitigate those areas. We worked with Carl and a number of folks on a committee going back to, I think it was 2016 or so, meeting on a variety of different occasions. For every town, a hazard mitigation plan is really important. For every dollar a town spends on mitigation, typically you save about $4 in what you would be using to remedy that down the line. So we feel it's really important. Our process has involved lots of emergency personnel here in the town, Carl, the chief of police, the planning director, Todd Gerard, and a number of other folks. The process began in the town back, like I said, a couple years ago. I've got a one-page summary, you guys, did you receive the summary?
I think they, I think Peter sent those to Nora.
You did. Got this? Anyway, just to review some of those pieces, we started the plan development back in January 2018. There was a survey that was issued. There was a public event that was held in June of 2019. The plan was developed, was sent to MEMA for review. MEMA reviews it, they send it on to FEMA because this funding comes from FEMA to MEMA and then back to us. Kind of a very circular process. We then made any kind of corrections, sent it back to FEMA, and so this is now in the final stages where they just need your adoption of the plan.
Just one very simple thing, the hazard mitigation grants that are out there, you have to have a plan approved. And say, for instance, all of a sudden, you're getting an area where it keeps flooding, and say a culvert could fix it. They have a formula they use, if they had to detour traffic, say they had to go around two miles.
Right.
They take into account the mileage, the time wasted, the person's time wasted, and say you had 2,000 cars goodbye there a day, it could be a significant amount of money, because say it was $50,000 for the culvert, and say their figures came up to like $52,000 that you were wasting because of not having the culvert there, they would give it to you for $2,000, or even a dollar, as long as you can show over that you're wasting more money not having it there by even a dollar, as long as they have it, you maximize it, and they will pay for it. So it's a very, very wise thing to have. And we did get money from the snowstorms and everything else, so. We got $56,000, and I'm just good word, we're getting $982 more. It's not a lot, but it's something.
Thank you, Carl. Anyone have questions?
I had a quick question, but John, you were first.
I'm good.
Cool. Through the chair, thank you for this, this is great. I'll just one quick question on page A7. It references the page 73 that the mitigation plan was incorporated with MVP, which my understanding stands for, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Community, but we're not sure if we actually are that?
That's through Fussin O'Neil. That's, they wrote a grant.
Okay.
Because everything they do has to be green, okay? And they give stormwater and this, that, and the other thing. If they could plant certain things and causes to lessen the stormwater or direct it a different way, they even talked about, we went up, I went with them, we went up on the roofs of the schools where they're saying they were having stormwater problems, but they actually put plants up there, and to do things to mitigate that. That's a little different than what we do here, okay? MVP, that's, they wrote the grant, they did everything so that they could come in and help us. And then CMR PC is the other side of, the other half of the program.
Yeah, the two, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program that the state offers, and it's a state program, works really well with this. You'll see there's a lot of crossover where that hazard mitigation plan is really kind of looking at what your previous, kind of what happens in town, you know, we were just talking about, you know, where you're flooding, our areas are, where the high sedimentation, where you see erosion. And the MVP program that the state has developed is really forward-looking. The town of Charlton's gone through a workshop with Fussin O'Neil, I understand, where you start to work through a number of stakeholders, where you identify areas that you can then target that hazard mitigation dollars. So it works really well, the two programs together.
Yeah, my only concern, and that's a very rough even term to use, is that we'd be signing off saying, this is good, but there's an assumption that we are an MVP community, but you all aren't sure that we are?
You are.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, we are, I'm sorry.
Oh, because, no, no, I'm sorry, because I'm seeing on page A7 that there's no mention anywhere in the HMP that the town of Charlton is a certified MVP community.
Yes, we are.
Okay, so that's not, so I don't...
It may, it may not have been at the time when it was originally submitted, but...
All right, all right. We're good. And maybe this will clarify that. I think the pages you're looking at is feedback from FEMA.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That came, that told us what we had to, what we had to address in the current plan. So through the chair, you're just looking for us to approve the plan tonight so that we're good to go.
As long as this is good, and that we're not certifying something that we shouldn't be, I'm fine.
Yeah, so, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? During and all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for all your...
And you have the certificate of reduction? If not, I can leave this with you and...
You may want to leave it.
I'll leave it.
It's going to be put on letterhead.
Yeah, this needs to be put on letterhead.
I mean, have you met us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Carl.
Seriously, thank you both.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Seriously, thank you both.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, John, thank you for that. That wasn't John.
Took me a while to look at it and then going, what is this?
That being done, we'll go back to our 6:45, public safety. So Fincom is here, you're still called to order, I assume, right?
Yes, we are.
So Fincom has joined us, we can do this one time. Chief?
Same as before, they've asked for a place on New Jenner for an updated board status and request a change in direction for the budget, building project, makeup of the committee members and direction regarding additional funds to complete the design of the building. This, Captain Barton.
Just, this is basically just an update of where we are since the vote. Our committee had voted to, after vote, we voted to set our sights on just to do a standalone fire station. Now, that's just our committee, so. We have the architects here to tell us, let us know that where we are with the drawings and how we can continue from that in the funding. And basically, we need direction from you people and Fincom. So we're waiting to hear from them, and Robbie's gonna fill you in on where we are with the direction we're going.
So for the board members that don't know.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we want to have all the Fincom members also come up here so that we have the board, they can hear, ask questions, vote as well? They're all just sitting in the audience right now.
It's up to them.
You guys are part of this conversation. All right, so go ahead, Rob.
So for the board members and for finance committee and people in the public who may have not know who our experts are that are helping us, behind me is Jeff McElravy and Rebecca Hopkins, they're from Tecton Architects, they're the architectural firm that was hired. And over the corner is Steve Theron, he's from Vertex Engineering, they're our owner's project manager company that was hired as well. So like Ralph said, we came before you guys on August 27th and said, hey, what do you want us to do now? And the idea was for a fire station communication center with, situated in a way that we would be able to maybe add a police station on later on. So we went back to the committee, we met several times, we spoke to the, you know, the architects and Vertex, and they, and their professional opinion has given us it's not really a great idea, and I'll let them explain why, you know, versus me explaining it. So they'll come up and explain why, that that's not really a great idea. We did receive a letter from the police chief and Lieutenant Dowd, who are both on the committee as far as the concern that they had as well if we went down that road. So the committee has looked at it, we did receive a proposal from Tecton where they want us to try to do something between now and May before we go forward again. And they gave us a little proposal of how much additional funds that we're gonna potentially need. So spoke to Mr. Kamasi from Finance Committee, and it seems like we're not gonna request any additional money, we're just sort of letting you guys know as this plan goes through. Just because the amount of money that we sort of need is out of the realm of what's possible between outside of town meeting, that's all. So we just met and we, again, the committee is asking if it's okay for us to go with a fire station only, it's what the committee is, thinks that is the best. And if you want to hear from Tecton, they can definitely explain it a little bit better as far as why.
So for me, I would, and I think I just heard about you guys earlier, I was in Auburn this morning, you're working with Auburn?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So if I heard correctly, was it like thirty years of experience designing fire stations? So I'd like to hear.
Through the chair, just a quick question. I want to just make sure whatever we do, of course, is legal. What, I know the debt exclusion was voted down, but what language did we use when it was passed at town meeting? And again, I don't remember, and I would imagine we're obligated to that because that passed. I follow what I'm saying, we need to check the language and what we, the town voted to do, what are we authorized to do without town meeting vote if it's, if we're changing it? That's all, I just want to make sure before we dig too deep that, you know.
I asked Donna that question, and we as the committee had that question as well, was at the May town meeting, they, the townspeople approved building a $28.5 million public safety complex. At the August meeting, they defeated the funding mechanism that we were putting forward in order to build it. So I asked Donna, so what do we do now? And she had two suggestions. Suggestion one would be at the May town, no, at the May ballot vote, the May elections, to put two ballot questions on, vote to approve a debt exclusion to fund the $28.5 million public safety complex the exact same way as it was written before. Or question two is vote to approve a debt exclusion to fund a, we don't know the dollar amount yet, fire station only. And then if it, the fire station only passes, then we would have to go to the May town meeting the following week, and there would have to be an article on the May town meeting changing the public safety building to a fire station only. So we're just essentially voting in reverse is what, than what we did before. If the public safety ballot question passes, then we're all done, we're good. But again.
We saw how that went.
Right. We don't want to delay and then end up going in May and then having it defeated. So the committee has, again, I'll let Tecton explain sort of their expertise, but you're gonna remember, every time you delay, cost is going up, so it's not going to go down.
Right, so I think for me, I'd like to hear what they had to say, but at the same time, and if you remember, I was the third vote, enabled us to continue and even get to this point, because I felt you guys deserved, after all that hard work, the right to see if there was a way to rectify or fix the current scenario. That being said, I believe I have at least one chief, and I'm not a firefighter and I'm not a police officer, it's not my job, so I don't know those answers, they do. And they are probably our highest ranking officials in those positions, and no one to me knows more about being a police officer than my police chief. No one knows more to, about being a firefighter, I think, and running a fire department than my fire chief. So I'm also gonna go with their recommendations. And unless things have changed, I also have in the back of my mind that little bug where at least one chief has said to me, if it's not a public safety building, it's a waste of time and money, don't do it. So I've gotta juggle that because I'm relying on my chiefs, there's a reason we put them in that role, and that's to rely on them and their recommendations. So that's, I'm putting that out there as well.
Okay.
So absolutely, it is, it is a financial benefit to a community to pursue a public safety building when both of those are needed. There is an economy to scale to building a building like that, and you have the opportunity of relying on systems that share. For instance, you know, a public safety building could be supported by a single generator, a large generator, because it needs to carry the capacity of both functions, but it is a single generator, and that carries an economy to scale. Likewise, with a lot of the mechanical systems and the life safety equipment that goes into the building. There's a real advantage to buying a single system that supports both functions within the building. One of the unique challenges that you have when you do a public safety building is, is they do take up a lot of site. And in particular, on the site that we're looking at, that involves a fair amount of fill, and the public safety solution that was presented to the community, it stayed within all of our wetland restrictions, but it used a lot of that site and required a lot of prep of that building. If you were to pursue doing a fire station only at this time, I think you open up opportunities to realize some savings in terms of the site development, because you would be developing a much smaller portion of the site for this building. And I think, I think you could really see that translate a little bit more in terms of cost effectiveness for that sole building. The problem with doing a fire today and adding on a police tomorrow is you start to lose some of those economies to scale that I talked about, because you're not going to buy a generator today that's big enough for both buildings, because you don't know what that future building is. So you start introducing, you know, maybe we end up buying two generators, so, you know, so that we can share the load, but you really do a lot, lose a lot of the economies to scale. You do have a big enough site that could support both buildings in the future, even if you didn't pursue a public safety facility today, or if you decided to build a fire station and then a police station at a later date on that same site, I think the opportunity is still there. I just worry that you may burden a fire station only with some additional costs, prepping it for the day that it becomes a police facility, that may not be necessary, because you've got the site available for that in the future. You know, this is not a hard and fast rule, but the, these economies to scales are what really make the public safety facility work as a fiscal opportunity.
Questions from the board?
No, through the chair, I mean, my only concern was, I think you just hit it right on, is that if or when an expansion or a new building is necessary for the police department, that there is room available, it'll clearly be much more expensive.
Yeah, well, you know.
But.
We've seen a lot of escalation recently in the construction market. At one point, I thought maybe it was gonna soften on us a little, but I see no sign of that at the moment, so.
But the, but the available land area is there for some future piece?
Absolutely is.
So you, you guys worked on the original design?
That's correct.
So in the final design, and I don't, I'm gonna rely on you, was there like a training facility or training built into that public safety for fire?
There are absolutely training functions built into the fire station. It gives the opportunity to use the apparatus bays for a variety of training scenarios within the bays themselves.
So one, I guess one of the reasons I ask, with all the conversations we're having, you know, looking back to a full public safety building, if you remove that, since we have West Wilson, I believe it's a full training facility only twenty minutes away, where they can train with a full training facility, if we remove that from our public safety facility, would that have enough of an impact or give us the right direction to enable us to build the complete police and fire still? Is it, is it that big of a difference in cost if we remove that to get both of them built?
In general, no, it's not, it's not a huge percentage of the overall cost of the project. The kinds of things you do is taking advantage of space that are already in the building, for instance, you know, in the apparatus bay where you have a high volume space, you got lots of headroom because of the big trucks that are in there, you've got also support spaces that go along with the apparatus bays, like your turnout, your storage, and your SCBA room, and your mechanic space, those are all lower spaces. And so in order to take advantage of this as a training opportunity, you'll put a mezzanine up on top of those, and then you can, you can essentially build a wall and create various openings so you can do bailout training and ropes training right there inside the apparatus bay using, you know, mezzanine space that's available because it's cheap and easy to grab. If, you know, if you do a separate training tower, there is a little bit of cost associated with that, that if you would rather relocate that to a training facility, there's a little bit of money involved in that, but in the course of a significant, you know, investment, it's a very tiny percentage.
So it's not, it's not something that would be significant enough change in the overall cost that we could float it back to the taxpayers minus that, and oh, look, it's 10 million less.
Yeah, I know, it's not gonna save you $10 million now. Few hundred thousand perhaps?
Yeah, not enough to make a ding.
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
Just in rough numbers, because we're dealing in millions here, okay? What is your rough guess on what a fire station slash communication facility would cost versus, versus a public safety building? So in other words, what I'm looking for is the delta if we lop off the police station portion of it.
I think in very crude numbers, we had expressed that a fire station only would be a project cost, not a construction cost, a total project cost in the neighborhood of 18 million. If you put the communications facility back into that, it's probably closer to 20 million. I would defer to your police department a little bit on the discussion about whether that would have an operational impact for them, because in many cases, the staffing of the communications center is really important for the operations.
Okay, so through the chair. And please, only because I've been, and more, this is more to the rest of the committee members, because I remember discussing this, and probably to the two chiefs also, at what point in the lifecycle is our current communications center? Pray tell, because if I remember correctly, it's done.
How can we answer that?
Does Chief, you know?
I would say that's a fair assessment, yes.
And if I remember correctly, the other portion of that, that question besides the hardware, is that the software that we use to run the communications facility is also outdated and it's patched together right now. So a critical point of our EMS system that we have is done. It's $2 million right off the bat to just replace that now, okay? So if that makes anybody's decision any easier.
So you're looking around 18 to 20 million, but you said that does not include construction costs?
No, no, that is your total project cost.
Oh, that's the total, including construction.
Yeah, no, I want to be clear, because in my business, we get lots of people throwing around, you know, hard construction costs versus total.
So this is an estimate, okay, this is an estimate complete?
Yes.
We'll say 18 to 20 with communications. So the original public safety, if I remember, was 28?
Twenty-five, twenty-five on the high end.
So 28 on the high end versus potentially 20 just for fire. So in other words, we cannot go back to the taxpayers and say, hey, we lopped off police and we got rid of public safety, and now we want to build for you fire and communications for 20. And by the way, it's, it's still way higher than I think people had in mind, who were talking, oh, 12, 15 million, I don't think you can build fire and comm for 15, 12, 15 million. And if we're already gonna be at 18 to 20 million just for fire and communications, going fire only, it just, it seems like it's just a massive mistake.
Through the chair. I was one of those two votes that voted against this back in August. And I didn't vote against it because I don't believe that we need a decent fire, police and communications facility. I voted against it because I don't want to do it piecemeal. It's not cost effective, it's not an efficient use of the taxpayer funds, it's a bad idea all around, in my opinion. Our police department is out of code, and one way or another, we are gonna be forced to replace it. We have to replace that building, we have to replace the communications. We got pushed back from the taxpayers when it came to that 28.5 and how to fund it. I think what we need to do is come up with another way to fund it, because we need it. We can't do this piecemeal. Well, we can, but again, it's not a good use of the taxpayer funds, it's just not. I stand by what I said back in August. I think it's a terrible idea.
Anyone from Fincom? Any comments or questions?
I have a question through the chair, thank you. What percentage of the total cost is site prep, site work?
I don't have that data in front of me at the moment. It varies depending on the site. In the case of the public safety building, it was.
Less than three, over five?
It's over five.
Oh, yeah.
So one of the thoughts for the town is maybe we find a different location, just put $5 million in the dirt, and it'll work.
So, so through the chair, and Rick, I appreciate the comment, the problem is that for how many years, Rob, has the, has the town looked for a site for the fire station? We've gone, they have gone through a lot of time. I think three iterations of fires, just a fire station study committee, and it was, it's every, every site that was proposed, and since I've been on the committee, there was, there has been at least three or four proposals for sites. One was at the water tower, which Mr. Proudie and Mr. Glipman were very kind in having us look at, and that was unfeasible. We had a gander at Taberski's property over at CV, over across from CBS, another parcel on North Main Street, further down on the left-hand side. another parcel on North Main Street further down on the left-hand side. It, it, the sites that were, what we would consider premium sites to look at, um, once you start looking at also the development costs there, um, the location of a site, and the, and, you know, what we're gonna have to do to make the building fit, it was, it was terrible. Uh, previous, uh, previous, uh, constitutions of the, uh, of the fire station, uh, building committee looked at, uh, parcel in between North, uh, North Side Road and Center Depot Road. And that was, that was also shot down. There was actually a pretty good-sized parcel in there. The development costs on that were, were through the roof also. Um, and it was just for a fire station because of, because of wetland consideration, thing like that. That's, that's really the problem. The, the wide-open parcels or the good parcels to put this on, uh, the site development costs are high because of just natural childhood land.
So there is one, I guess one other question.
The actual location?
The actual location-
On the property at eighty-five percent?
Right, so the, the property we're already looking at. There's a certain cost attributed with putting it where the decision had been made to put it on that parcel. If the building was put somewhere else in the parcel, higher up or somewhere else in that parcel, would that have a dramatic impact on the cost?
We did explore that option for the public safety facility. Um, we did have a second location on the site that we explored. Uh, there was a slight increase, um, up in that location. And if I may, I did pull up from the old estimate that the, the raw cost for site development without contingencies and markups and all that is in the neighborhood of three million dollars. So with the contingencies and markups, you, you would expect that it's a little bit more than that as a percentage of the whole com, uh, project, but.
So moving the facility to a different spot on the same place could have potentially lowered the cost by locating it elsewhere on that property?
It was a slight increase in the cost if we went higher up on the site. We developed an alternative site plan. And, uh, the, the big issue there is we had to cross the, uh, the stream. Um, so we had to, to build, uh, a, a, a stream crossing.
You had to build a stream crossing for where it is now, or if you put it somewhere else?
That's if we went further up on the hill from the location that was ultimately proposed.
Okay, so the location that's proposed now is the least expensive solution on that parcel?
Yes. There's, if I may, there's a number of wetlands on that site, um, in the other front portion, um, which due to the size of the building and the other site needs, um, we couldn't develop in that area. Um, so the two major open areas was right adjacent to the existing police station, and then up further, kind of on the top, like it's a little flat, a little closer to the church. Um, and we looked at both, we basically estimated both of those site locations.
So Mr. Chairman, through you. It sounds like we have three options in front of us. One is do nothing, literally just say scrap this entire project, which I think is a mistake, quite frankly. Or, or perhaps delay, it might be a better way to say it. Option two is just build a fire station. And option three is reconsider this board's vote that we, that we do a fire station and rather go back to the town and ask for a public safety building. Unless someone comes up with a fourth option, I'm not gonna go.
Yeah, so no, I, the reason I gave my third vote back in August was so we could actually have this conversation. Because without it, we don't should be talking today. Um, that being said, I agree with Mr. Borowski that the first option really is not tenable, um, to do nothing or postpone. It's just gonna get worse. We're, we're, I, I will say we're in need, I think we're truly in dire need. Um, so while I am probably one of the most guilty people here of saying, don't keep going back, you know, or throwing things against the wall until it sticks. And I've always argued against doing that. And I, I, and in, I would say probably ninety-nine point nine percent of the cases, I will continue to say, the taxpayers said no, stop throwing it back out there. This is, I think, one of those cases where it's too important, and I think we have to go back to say, look, we found out, we met again now. It, it's not gonna be twelve to fifteen million for fire only. It's gonna be so expensive that, again, it's, it's just because cost prohibitive, you have to go public safety, we need it, and it really is the only solution. And we have to just do a better job of trying to get that message out to the voters.
Through the chair, I, I just have one more question. To bring the police station, the current police station up to somewhat code, okay? Has, have, and, uh, I know we, I know we as a committee have veered away from that portion of it, but is there any, is there any data on what it's gonna cost us to bring that up to code? And I'm not gonna, I'm gonna take out the two million on the communications center cause that's a given that we have to do already. Okay, so that's, that, that was one of the things that weighed heavily on, on the, on the, the committee when we were looking at. So do, do we have that number, or can we get that number?
All right, so ju- just on the, the, these numbers that I'm quoting for fire and for what I'm about to share, these are, these are very crude.
That's fine. I'm assuming in order of magnitude, minus twenty-five, plus seventy-five.
Yeah, I mean, I, I always like to be a little on the high side here, so, but, you know.
That's where you do work.
Um, I did very quickly, in the, in the, one afternoon, um, take a shot at doing a, a quick renovation to the existing police facility structure. And I will tell you that it, it doesn't, doesn't meet the program of what we would've put into the public safety facility. But I was trying to see what we could do with the space to get, you know, to get some life out of it, to buy a short-term solution. And crudely, we came up with a five million dollar cost to renovate that building. And that, again, it's not a long-term, that's not a fifty-year solution.
So the fire only plus com, and then just renovating police, in the end, it's about a one or two million dollar difference than just building the entire new?
Well, if you, if you use a plus seventy-five percent estimate on that, it's ultimately goes right back to where we were anyway. Truly, I mean, if you think, I mean, if, if you go eighteen to twenty and you use in order of magnitude estimate of minus twenty-five, plus seventy-five, if you go high-end, seventy-five, that's, uh, seven, whatever it is, three, three point seven five, that's eight point seven five, you're right back to the twenty-eight point five.
Right, but it's gonna cost you more because you're gonna do the police later, and later, construction costs are gonna be higher.
Through the chair. I think we need to do a better job of communicating with the residents just how much we need this because I think that's where we failed. Perhaps that's just one of the areas where we failed with this project. We're talking about people's health and well-being and, and their safety. And while you don't wanna put a price on that, I think we have a price on that, and that price is twenty-eight point five million dollars.
Well, it could be more now.
But it could be more because we've delayed it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mean to be flip, but that's the reality.
It's true.
Yeah.
Chief?
What you're all saying is the obvious elephant in the room. The committee in the position paper identified that stating that if you go this route based on what the voter said to do, in the long run, it's gonna cost you more money. There's no way around that.
Cost of nothing goes down, we know.
And even going back with just fire and renovating police, now we, we have a price for that, it's the same as building the public safety building.
Yeah.
But the, the, the question is, and, and we, we agree, the question is, what do you wanna do now moving forward? Because you can't delay. It's thirty years now that the fire station committees have been looking. And it's been thirty years that it's been kicked down the road. Coming here and deciding nothing just feeds into that, and it'll never get done.
Yeah, I, I don't think anyone's gonna decide nothing tonight. I think tonight they're gonna decide to either do it or push for the public safety, or as he said, just kill the whole thing, but I don't think that's gonna happen.
That would, that would not be the difference.
But based on what we heard from the public in the vote, which was pretty substantial, is that they didn't have the stomach for the project.
Excuse me, through, through the chair, are you talking about the most recent town meeting we had?
The August vote, which was more than two to one against for the twenty-eight point five million dollar project.
I understand, so there were a very limited number of people in the room that night?
There, but that's always-
Ballot vote.
But I, I, oh, the ballot vote, sorry.
Thirteen hundred voters.
Sorry.
It passed overwhelmingly at town meeting.
Yes, you're right.
And then it got destroyed, quite frankly, at, at the ballot.
Yeah.
Correct.
So unless a revenue source becomes available, or you're looking at another vote that is gonna squash the project.
Right, or unless there are other ideas to find more ways to get word out to more people and get people to the polls.
Through the, through the chair. You know, the definition of insanity, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so-
Call me crazy.
Some people in this room probably know what I'm gonna ask, but I do believe if a major gifts campaign, a capital campaign was undertaken, and, because it does more than raise funds, it raises awareness. It, it gets support, we did it for the library, and, and again, we didn't raise, you know, we raised about a million and a half. But, but I think if we're going to go for the, for the huge complex, something needs to change, or that, you're, you're right, we're gonna have the exact same result. But if, if, and it's, it's, it's work, but it's doable. But, so that's my one suggestion. I don't know if the committee has had a conversation about that. Um, but that is the one thing that I know I've heard in, in my, voiced my opinion or concerns about because I, I think it does a lot, again, it creates the awareness, it gets the support, um, and, and raises a great deal of money too, if you have the right people on the committee. Through, through, through the chair, I would like to commend Slav Spewak for thinking outside the box.
So let's ask Bobby and Ralph if they've thought about that?
I think it's an excellent suggestion to start with, absolutely.
So, the only thing with the committee, um, we were originally designing a, a flyer, mailer to remind people about the, the project and to get people to attend the vote. And then after the May vote, the way that happened, it was overwhelmingly in favor, eighty-seven percent, I believe, in favor of the building. Um, we kinda backed away from that. We didn't really think there was a, a need to go out and do it. Um, there was a lot of confusion. Um, there's people probably, there's probably some people in this room that don't understand what that May vote meant, that the taxpayers approved the building, twenty-eight point five million dollar building. They don't think that that's actually what happened. They think that it was just a, just a vote, and that the approval actually happened at the August vote. So there was a lot of confusion that existed out there. As far as fundraising and, and holding galas and stuff like they did for the library, um, I don't know if that's, um, an avenue. I, I would know nothing about that, so I would definitely have to bring on, or we would have to, as a committee, have to bring on a, a good number of people to sort of go down that road. Um, but, you know, like what the chief said is, um, that the taxpayers were very open. And I understand, we're all on the same page. The committee agrees with you guys that financially speaking, for the taxpayers' money, it would make the most sense to do a public safety building. However, in lieu of keep kicking the can down the road, if the taxpayers vote no, and keep voting no, and keep voting no, that fire station only, that was only supposed to be five point one million dollars twenty-five years ago, we're now up to, like the architect said, eighteen point five million dollars because we've continued to kick that can down the road. Um, is, and, and I agree, we have multiple different problems, you know, as far as, you know, Mr. McGrath has, you know, said is, the communications center definitely needs to be something done with it. You know, we are kinda in this issue with that, with that center. You know, and we can, we can defer to the, you know, the police chief and the, uh, you know, Lieutenant Dowd, who sits on the committee as well. Um, in their opinion, it was, let's get the fire station going, and then we can, um, give it a few years, and then we can worry about doing something with the police station. Now, I don't know the funding mechanism, if that's, that's obviously a FinCom question, is, does the funding ability change, you know, next year? If we go with a eighteen million dollar building and it's a less dollar amount, so there's less has to be borrowed, does that change the funding mechanism? Is it still a debt exclusion? I don't know, that's-
So, well, not only that, but I think honestly, and one of my great concerns is, fire and coms only is gonna fail. Because I think the taxpayers, when they shot down the public safety, public safety for twenty-five, the feedback I was hearing after that vote, talking to people, I don't think they envisioned it being twenty point five for fire and coms. And the minute we hit with that number, I think that's gonna fail too. So, it's either gonna, hold on, it's either gonna fail, right? It's gonna fail, I think it's gonna fail your way. Either it's gonna fail at twen- i- if we, if we do nothing and just go the same route, and twenty point five without education, without a capital plan, I, I like where, where Ms. Spewak went. And perhaps she can give a little, a little guidance as far as the capital campaign to help alleviate the cost. But I think if we come back to the voters and say, hey, okay, you shot down public safety, we're gonna do fire coms only, by the way, that's twenty million, twenty point five, I think that's dead in the water. And that means that we, we sent you, in my opinion, down this road, the secondary road, destined for failure anyway. So to me, if we're gonna do it, the way to do it is do it right. Do it public safety, work with Select and Spewak, try and get how we, whatever we can do to make happen a capital campaign, and try and come up with some of the money to lower the impact to the taxpayer, do greater education, because i- if we go and ask them for twenty million for fire only, and we could've had everything for twenty-eight, I just think it's dead in the water.
Through the chair. I think, I think some of the numbers that are being bandied about tonight, um, we did not have when we, when we moved forward with the, with the vote on, on funding. I think if the taxpayers do know what the, what the, the cost of a fire station is, okay? Just the fire station, no com center. And then you, you also lay out for the taxpayer. And by the way, you're going to have to put two million dollars into the, into a new com center, whether it's at the fire station, the new fire station, or it's going to be put into the existing police station. And also, you're gonna have to probably sink about five million into an existing police station in, on, and I believe that's for the same footprint of debt, which does nothing for adding any space to the police station, which you might as well put the money in the middle of the road on the Sonic Home Road in Burnham.
Because literally, given the tax pay what they've asked for, it turns out it's gonna cost the same as building the public safety building.
So I think, through the chair again, I think that Select and Spewak has come up with a, a very good idea, uh, though, you know, to, to gain some money, gain some money that way. But I think at the end of the day, we're still gonna have, gonna have to go forward with a public safety building committee, give the, give the taxpayers more information, have everybody on the same page, okay? Which I say this all the time, if we're gonna do something, make sure everybody is on the same page. I don't wanna hear about police officers out there saying that we don't need this and, 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 and submarining, uh, a, 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 or sniping, I'll call it, uh, or, or any other members of the department saying that we don't need it when in fact, I haven't seen any of those people at any of the meetings, okay? I was very, very upset when I heard some of the comments coming from some of the members of the police department. I was, and, and then having some other members in the community actually putting out, uh, false information, I'll call it. Uh, it's to, to the, to the committee, it was dejecting. It was, it was very, very, uh, dejecting to be on, you know, to have that happen after all the work that's gone in. And, and, and I know it's a big expense. The, the taxpayers do have to show, uh, some support, uh, behind what the selectmen, the FinCom, and the, and the committee have come up with. Uh, we're, we're not doing this because we wanna do it, or because we want, you know, we wanna have a, a shiny new building. We're gonna have somebody, and I said this before, somebody at that fire station is gonna get hurt, okay? Going in between the size of those trucks and the doorways that we have down there, and somebody at the police department is gonna get, is, is gonna get, get hurt with, with some of the crap that we have to bring into the police station with no way to handle it. Some of the chemicals that these, these kooks have on them.
So, I think a combination, I think Ms. Spewak and, and Ms. Noble. So the capital committee, I think, is a good idea. And Ms. Noble's right as well, so this isn't a, a burden, I think, that the committee should be carrying by themselves, right? So they certainly should do their due diligence, do education. It seems that the board can be very public in its support. And I don't think we were, other boards were as involved as perhaps boards could be very publicly, to give them a little assistance in helping to lift. And, and Henry, you had?
Yeah, I was just, just gonna make mention, this, for us, he gave us three options. There is actually a fourth option. The way I understand it, at the town meeting, we all approved the spending of twenty-eight point to build a building. What they voted down at that, um, election was the funding mechanism. Because everybody viewed the debt exclusion cost to my taxes.
Yes.
I believe that we still have the- I believe that we still have the ability to build this building, it just has to be paid for out of tax revenue, out of, okay? Now, to do that, and I don't know the numbers, I'm just throwing it out there, okay? I don't know what the numbers are to pay that debt that if we have to borrow to do this. And it may mean that the library closes now two more days a week, or it may mean that the, you're going to love this chief, but he only gets two new cars a year, and maybe one new car a year, okay?
I promise I will take two from here on up.
I know you want you two. But it, it may mean doing other things, okay? But we could do it out of tax revenue, right? The, the townspeople are just going to have to understand, you're going to pay for it one way or another, in decreased services somewhere, but we need this, this building. If we are, and all I care about is everybody saying, we need the building, we need the building, we need the building, right? And I agree with that. And I'm not suggesting that we do it out of, I'm just saying, that is a fourth option.
And thank you, Henry, because it's, it's good to have that option. I didn't think of that.
Well, you're probably looking at around one point one mill a year.
Yes.
In service reduction, or, or, or lack of spending, because, you know, a million dollars a year for thirty years, throw on, I'm going to throw something out there with a bond rating around two and a half, three percent. Yeah, you're, I mean, I'm doing the math off my head, but you probably took him thirty-year amortization, probably around one point one, one point two mill.
It was, yeah, right on, off the top of your head. Spectacular. It was, it was an annual payment of one point one million dollars, so.
Bill, drop the mic.
So I didn't know if there was, you know, we borrow half of it, and we use the other half out of debt, you know, out of our regular tax revenue. So one of the other things that the committee thought about is, this number of twenty-eight point five, or this number of nineteen million, either number, whatever one you unused, depending on what the building is, it's a very high level number, and it's actually not even at design level. So we do have an estimate from them to, to sort of design the fires. This is just an estimate for the fire stations, what we asked for, to finish designing the fire station. So that's picking out the carpet, that's picking out the lights, it's designing the heating system, that's designing it. And what that allows us is, it allows us to get a better estimate, an actual estimate, instead of a guestimate, on what that number is. So many communities, and Jeff can speak about this piecemeal, their projects together. They do their feasibility money, they do their design development money, and then they do their project money. So, the other option is at the May annual town meeting, for us to ask for eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, like an article for eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, and that would be the design of the building. So then, come the October town meeting, we would have a true number of what the building is. That twenty-eight point five, like I said, that was, that was a twenty-five million dollar project cost with three and a half million dollars of contingency money built in there, because we just didn't know what it was going to end up being. That contingency money, Jeff, would come down if we were able to put the eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars towards it. So then, what that does is, it brings the project cost down, because it's eight hundred and twenty-six dollars off the total cost, as well as we get a more finite number, instead of this high-end guess number.
At the risk of sounding remarkably unpopular, I'm sure I'm in the minority on this, and I may be the lone dissenting voice. I was a huge proponent of the public safety building. I advocated for it. I did everything I could to try to get it out there. But I can't, in good conscience, say that I know better than the voters. Granted, we have, we have all of our information. Everything that we say mathematically absolutely makes sense. It is not a good deal to do it piecemeal, meaning separate buildings. It's just not a good idea. But the voters said no. It's that simple to me. They don't want to spend the money, for whatever reason. I'm not saying I agree with it, but I may be the lone voice, and I'm okay being that. And I'm not going to like scream and yell and get on my pedestal. I'll save that for other things. But we run the risk as a board of once again saying to the public of, we know better than you, and we're going to keep coming back to you over and over and over again, until you agree with what we want. Even if it makes sense, at some point, I think we have to say, voters, I get it, we're neighbors, we're friends, I one hundred percent disagree with you, but the majority voted, and they voted overwhelmingly in a secret ballot to say, we don't want to spend twenty-eight point five million. And Rob and his team, in my opinion, you guys could not have done a better job. How many times did you all, you know, have nighttime meetings during the day? You did your videos. You, you opened up the buildings for tours. I thought you guys did a phenomenal job. I don't know what changes this time around, except to say, as a reminder, yes, this is going to cost more money if we do it piecemeal.
So, Mr. Borowski, there are two things I think that make this different. And I think that if this goes forward with a vote tonight to pursue public safety and it fails, I would be a second vote with you next time, saying, it's not coming back. And that's always been my vote historically. I've always said, no, don't bring it back. They said no. I think there are two things that make this unique and different, and why it's worth going back a second time. The first is, the fact that they said no to public safety, we said, okay, we heard you, we'll go back and look at what all the feedback was, fire only comms, and just rehabbing police. And well, now we have an answer that that costs the same as public safety, so hello, we can't do that. That alone warrants going back. Two, the, the knowledge that the public actually approved building the building, and to Henry's point, didn't, somebody didn't approve the funding mechanism, combined with what Ms. Spewak mentioned about a capital committee. So, taking all of these things into account makes us not your usual, sort against the wall till it sticks. There is information that we have now, that we didn't have then, that shows that what everyone asks us to do instead is actually going to cost exactly the same, which is a waste of taxpayer money. If they know that, that could change, what you want to do costs the same.
If not more, quite frankly.
Right?
No, it's not, it's not a case of if not more. It is more.
Right. So if we do it piecemeal, and just do fire, even if, and I've done that road today, fire, comms, and just rehabbing police, it's going to cost, it's going to cost, similar more than just building the public safety. So, it's actually not feasible. We did look into it, that's why we're coming back. Here's the reality, here's the cost. Two, capital, capital committee, other funding mechanisms and ways of managing the funds, since they actually approved the building, that's what makes, to me, different. That's what makes us unique enough to say, this is worth going back. Now, going back is what we have to offer, and to educate and inform. If they say no now, knowing that, hey, your piecemeal request is going to cost you the same or more, it's, it's, it's not feasible, right? And if we can't find either another funding mechanism, i.e. Henry's suggestion, and to help alleviate the, the load, the Karen's suggestion, then maybe it is back to, well, guess what? We came back asking for public safety, but there's enough that's new now or known to warrant it. If it fails again, then I'd be with you saying we got nothing. But I think that's enough to justify a second ask of the taxpayer.
I mean, your points are well taken. I mean, I would just caution this board in future iterations of, not to bring up a sore topic, but when we think around marijuana again, everything that was a town meeting was always very much a, I'm just going to say, an anti-marijuana sentiment. When it came to the ballot, every single ballot vote on marijuana has been, no, we're okay with it in town, but town meeting votes were very different. And we all know, just by the very nature and makeup of a town meeting, it's special interests. There's nothing wrong with special interests. That's part of politics and government. That's how we operate. But when it comes down to a secret ballot, and people get behind a curtain and want to go out and vote for a full day, I think that's much more representative. And all your points are well taken. I mean, I think you're right on. It's just a matter of, where does this board, in future iterations of this board, go? And I'm leaning towards saying, even though I don't like the answer, I'm going with the will of the voters on this one. But I'm not going to beat a dead horse, quite frankly. I mean, everything you're saying makes sense.
Right. To that point, up until this point, I was that vote. They said no, stop asking. And after this vote, I'll be that vote again. I just think there's enough that warrants it, enough difference that warrants it.
And through the chair, I would ask you, what do you think, it's our job to be fiscally responsible. Knowing what we know, do you think it's in the best interest to do both or one? Because I, I think, well, I'll let you.
No, I would caution that it's, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's our role to be fiscally responsible, but more importantly, to listen to the will of the voters. And being fiscally responsible absolutely means that we should go forward with a, with a, with a safety building. However, we have to recognize that that means that the five of us are going to go to, against the will of the voters, hypothetically, if we're, if we're a majority, and saying, we know better than you, because we're elected, and we don't like what you came, came back with.
So let's, like in that, I mean, really, that's what it means. Here's why it doesn't. It's the same thing. Motion to reconsider. Yes or no, right? So if you're running town meeting, and someone makes a motion to reconsider, there's grounds to accept the motion to reconsider.
Absolutely.
And grounds to not accept. Grounds to not accept are, there's nothing new, known information, you're just doing this for the sake of doing it a second time. Grounds to accept the motion to reconsider is, there's information unknown at the time of the last vote. I'm taking that approach, saying, we now have more information that is worth going back to, and saying, yes, but, and, you didn't know this either. That's the first angle. The second part of that is, to Henry and Karen's, we might have different numbers, based upon the capital committee and other funding mechanisms. But the bottom line is, and again, I'll go back to justifying, we're not going back and sort against the wall. We're going back now with, armed with information that we didn't know. And what we know now, we cannot in good faith go back and say, you said, don't build this, you said, build this, this and this. We just found out that this, this and this costs the same.
Somebody wants to make a motion, I'm happy to.
And as a chairman, you know I won't make a motion. It's second, my little vote.
What would the motion be?
I think a recommended motion, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, would be to support the committee with an article on the next town meeting for architectural monies, which would give them...
We don't know that exact number, because this estimate that they gave us for eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars was to complete the design of a fire station only. So they would have to give us some new numbers for, to complete the design of the public safety building. That would be a warrant article at the May meeting. And then, in that, the October meeting, the fall meeting, the special town meeting, is when we would go for the dollar amount for the construction of the, of the building.
Yeah, we have five months to like figure out the wording of it. I think it's more, I mean, because what I'm hearing is that, is that directionally.
It's also five months to talk about it, because if that vote fails, there is no second town meeting. If it doesn't pass the architectural money, there is no follow-up.
Agreed.
So you have between now and then also to hopefully work with, with Karen's experience on a, on a capital campaign, to get the board, to get people behind it.
Mr. Chair, this committee cannot be on that committee. There are too many of us that have a conflict of interest that are, cannot be involved at all.
Okay, so we had to figure that part out.
So now you're talking about developing a whole new committee, and you provide the direction.
So I, I think the motion that we need tonight should, should be that, that the, that the board direct the public, the public safety building committee to continue moving forward with building a, a public safety building committee, come back, and come back to us with how, how you want to do it. You know, do you want to pursue the, the model that I guess, is it Lexington or Concorde?
Yeah.
And, and probably the other, and I'm just rambling on right now. But I think one of, one of the other things, this isn't the, the motion, but I think one of the other things on that would be to work with the finance committee and, and, and Donna on how we would go about portioning this off, to do like the architectural, you know, drawings and stuff that we need so that we could go out to bid. So that'd be one portion. Maybe that's what we go for at this town meeting, to do that portion. But second, you know, work with, work with the, the finance committee and, and the board of Selectmen and Donna on how we're going to do this. Are we going to do it with the debt exclusion totally? Are we going to, are we going to look at our projections, what we have coming in for revenue? We're going to designate certain amount of that money to go towards that, you know? Financially, that's not my, that's not my bag, but, you know, that's, that's, so I think the motion should be that the public safety building committee keep moving forward with building a public safety building.
Yeah, and, and to that point as well, and Henry's, if you, if you can utilize tax revenue that way, you greatly lower the impact on the debt exclusion.
Did you make a motion, Mr. Borowski?
Mr. Chair, through you, through Selectmen, Spewak, do you remember offhand what the library committee raised?
I believe it was just on to one point five, but, but I've been on other capital campaigns that has raised twenty to thirty million. Again, not me, but, and I'd be happy to help guide.
But again, we're talking the town of Charlton, and you're one to one, I'll give you two million as a, as a number. That's...
But if you had two million, that means... Five twenty-six five, if you were to take some of that twenty-six five million from tax revenues, and if you got the debt exclusion down to eighteen point five, you know, now you've got a debt exclusion that's the same for public safety as if it was just for fire.
But on the back end of it, because now you're looking at this funding committee, this capital campaign, you're, you're pushing it down the road. We've already heard from the experts that if you push it down the road, you're, you're going to incur more, more costs in completing the project.
I know there's an issue procedurally, correct me if I'm wrong, we would have to, at the May election, if we didn't get a debt exclusion passed at the May election, the valid vote, and if all we did is at the October, I mean, at the May town meeting, asked for the dollar amount to, to continue design development, and then at the October meeting, we asked for the fun, you know, the full amount, we would then have to have another debt exclusion meeting. We would have to have another ballot vote at that point. So then, we hold a ballot vote in November-ish, December-ish, and then that fails, potentially, fails at that meeting, because the taxpayers, again, they've, they've approved the building, they've given us additional funds at the May meeting, but now they're, they've approved it at the October meeting, but then they have failed it again at the ballot vote. They don't want us to raise our taxes. So that is, in my opinion, a huge probability of actually occurring. So, your options are, we can have a debt exclusion ballot vote at the May meeting to fund the public safety building, like we just did this past August. That passes, then we're done. Then at the, then we can just ask for that additional amount of money, I guess, to piecemeal it together. So that's the problem. We're in this middle ground of procedurally, if we don't do a ballot vote at the May election, we have to do a ballot vote at some point, if it's going to require a debt exclusion.
If, but more than likely, I'd probably say, some portion, through a chair, like some portion of it would need to be as part of a debt exclusion. Now, there probably could be some that we need enough. I wouldn't recommend free cash, because I'd start to argue that's unstable, you know, revenue. But you would have to take it out of your, out of your O and M budget every year, some portion of it. But you're right on. I mean, I think right now, the direction has to be, is it nothing? Is it a public safety building? Or is it a fire station? And I think, it's like, may, may have made a motion.
Yeah, I made the motion, continue with the public safety, public safety.
All right. We had a motion, we didn't have a second.
Second.
Oh, we take it back. We've motioned a second.
You have a second now.
So, before we vote, any further discussion on the motion in the second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. Chair, no sign of motion, Karen's four to one.
Okay.
So, thank you, everybody. And then, so, next step, we should discuss. So, capital campaign. Karen, can I turn to you for...
Yeah, you can have a conversation with them, and I'll meet with Donna, too.
All right. So Karen's going to, going to spearhead for us, the capital campaign part of it. We did talk to Henry at FinCom, too, about the other funding mechanism, how we can piece this together.
Yes. What percentage of it could be a debt exclusion, if any, versus what percentage is, you know, opposite.
Thank you for your time.
Right. Does it say one thing, this town's full of a lot of brilliant minds and a lot around FinCom?
Absolutely.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate you going back.
Thanks, guys.
You don't know how much longer.
All right. So, next, I'm sorry, Sam. Excuse me, LNG chief?
Frank Lombardi, chairman of the LNG committee, is asked to be on tonight's agenda to provide the board with a list of requests put forth by the LNG committee for NEC to provide in a host agreement for the board's review.
I'll go for Franklin.
Take some wine.
And you know, you know I got sick after I got my flu shot, right?
Take tea.
Just.
Basically, hot tea, with a tea some tips of honey, and then you choose your liquor. I think you use whiskey. Whiskey works.
That's what.
You don't even have to have the honey. Never.
Thank you.
Trust me, it actually works, and it wouldn't harm me.
How you doing? All right. How are you, Frank?
Good, thanks.
All right. Somewhere in here, I have. I have it too, right? I had it. New or old business?
Old business.
Got it? Okay. All right. So Frank, this is the list of requests?
Yeah, so the LNG committing that a little over two weeks ago now. We were going to, I think we were going to try to meet before, but there was some, the attorney wasn't available certain dates or whatever. And so I thought that before, she won't be able to meet with the town until I think December 3rd's meeting. You're having a meeting on December 3rd, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that, that, I think we're going to schedule her for that. But I thought that there was too much time in between not to at least bring this to you, so we can keep the ball rolling forward. So the LNG Committee met, I'd say, probably a little over two weeks ago, and we came up with these as requests or conditions that we thought would be appropriate to include in a host community agreement. The, there was a representative there from NEC while we were going through this. So I'm sure they're well aware of what, what we're going to ask. And we kind of said to him, this is what we're going to come up with. The selectmen may have some other requests or conditions that might need to be included in that. And of course, this is above and beyond any tax implications that the town has with these folks. So this is in no, and I think the way we kind of looked at it was, this wasn't going to be in lieu of any kind of tax revenue that we could get from our agreement. This was all in addition to, and then, and then some of this might be nego, need to be negotiated to a certain extent, whether they're willing to do some of it, whether the town, how, how, how much, that some of these conditions are important to you as a selectman to be included in the agreement, so. I don't know, do you, do you have any questions on what I sent to you so far?
That one does.
Through the chair. Hi. I was looking at the wish list.
Yeah.
And I just wondered a couple of things.
Yeah.
Have you looked at other host agreements for public utilities in other towns coming up with this?
So, we didn't, we didn't specifically go over any other host agreements with any other towns. And I think to a certain extent, the, I, when I talked to our attorney last, she had a number of host agreements that they've negotiated in the past with different towns. So I think that, we'll probably go back with her.
Yeah.
And see if there's any other things that she thinks that we might need to be added, whatever, in, in terms of that. And I, I think from the committees, probably part of their perspective might be that this was, these are the things that we thought might be important to the town overall.
Right.
Versus what some other towns would be important. And I think there was a certain concern that if we started asking for absolutely outrageous things, then they might just say, forget it, we're not even going to bother.
That, that was my concern as well, yeah.
Yeah, so I, and I think a lot of these things that we kind of came up with are reasonably related to the project itself.
Certainly, any, any of these items that are related to public safety, most definitely.
Right, yeah.
But when we get down to the bottom here, and we talk about a sponsor for old home day fireworks, and they push back on that.
I, I, no, yeah, so, and I just, some examples, so, and we had talked about it at the end, like, there's some things that I'm sure that they're going to want to do to be part of the community.
Yes.
And, and, you know, and we will want, you know, you know, maybe we have them do some funding for some of the science pro, you know, science things.
I think that.
But it was, it was, there was nothing specific. I just kind of threw some examples.
No, and I think having them be involved in our science and technology at these schools.
Yeah.
Fantastic tie-in.
Right.
That, that actually fits in well.
Fits in with their project, you know?
Really well.
Especially if they're going to, you know, give some equipment or whatever for the earth sciences.
And it's a way for, for the town to welcome them into the community.
Right.
So it actually.
I mean, it's in their interest to do that, and it's our interest, and it's not going to cost them a huge amount of money.
Right.
To do a lot of that type of stuff, so. And I think we were going to get specific on that with them, just, just, yeah, I just kind of threw some examples in there for the attorney and for you guys, just to kind of.
Okay. I was just, just one more, sorry, John. Fund all or part of a new master plan for the town that you may have to justify.
Maybe.
But, you know, some of the other things, they, they do seem to tie in.
I mean, I originally asked them for like a dome stadium with a retractable roof and a.
Oh, yeah.
You know, a, a C-130, fire suppression plane, you know, I was kind of asking for those things, you know, I know I was ingested or anything. But yeah, you're probably right. Some of this stuff, we're going to probably have to justify and see what they're willing to do and what they're not willing to do.
Yeah, and, and I would really like to take a look at the other host agreements with the other towns, just to.
Yeah, I think.
Just to see, even though every town is different, I'd like to see what other utilities have increased.
So my, my recollection, at least with LNG, Hawkington is probably the other most active town that has an LNG facility.
Okay.
My understanding is that they've tried in the, they were trying to negotiate a host agreement with that company, and, and they never got one agreed to, and they're in litigation over the approv, over the entire approval.
Wow.
I think there was already a facility there, and then the, the LNG group wanted to expand the facility, the town wanted to do a host agreement as a condition of their approval, the, the state pretty much said, well, we don't condition that as part of the approval, and they never got what, what they were looking for. So I know in that, at least in that instance, for the other, for like other, other public utilities, power plants or whatever, we'll have to probably go back to the attorney, our attorney, and see what they have, and what we can get our hands on with them.
Okay.
Frank. Through the chair. Frank.
Yeah.
Deb Chakorini, has she, she isn't, she wasn't involved with the wish list, right?
No, so, but.
That's why I wanted to.
Yeah, so the way, I mean, from, from our, our meetings in the past, it was our understanding that we would come up with this, that Deb was going to be doing that tax revenue part. I, I know that she's out, she had her knee replaced.
Yeah.
And so I have, I emailed her, and CC'd our attorney on it, to have them, to have them get in touch with each other so that they can work that part out and incorporate it. Because the way I kind of thought about it with, the way you wanted to do it, you were going to do one agreement, the assessors were going to incorporate the tax part, however, that's negotiated through you guys or whatever, and then we were going to try to work on the rest. And so, some of these things that we have in this agreement, these things we're not going to know, and so the hearings started yesterday, we're not going to necessarily know how some of this is going to work out until we know a little bit more. So some of this might say, we agree to do a traffic plan, it's going to be, you know, once we know, we would, we would hammer out the details of that, but we would agree in principle to do some of these things.
Yeah, MOU. You'd have memorandum.
Yeah.
Through the chair. Assessors brought in their own consultant, and they have, that specializes, so they really have their part pretty much.
Yeah. We kept getting the bill for it. I don't know who this guy is.
I want to make sure it was taken.
Right, so, so correct me then, in a little guidance, so the next step then is for this board to, I'm assuming, direct our Amy, the attorney, to take all this together with the assessors and begin the process of talking to NEC.
Yes.
But we need a motion and a second for that.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to direct our counsel, Amy, to reach out, begin the discussions around a host agreement with NEC, taking into account feedback from the LNG Committee and the assessors.
Yep.
Discussion question, through the chair?
No, discussion, yes.
Is, through you to Frank, assuming this is the Route 169 site.
We're not really too sure.
Because my curiosity is around entering a host agreement without knowing what site is either being advocated by, or approved by this board, or at least resigned to our fate by this board, because that may very well.
The impression I was under was that this was the 169 site, and that at this point in time, there was no other option.
If we could.
I, I don't know, I don't know if that's going to be the case.
So through the chair, I would just, I would ask respectfully.
Yeah, the, the strategy regarding that, we should work.
Yeah.
That's later on this evening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, so through the chair, I would just hesitate to, to vote for it, or, or respectfully ask, maybe we table that motion until we either, out of executive session.
Well, I, I think, I think, I think either site, some of these are going to apply regardless of what the site is. So it, like, for example, in terms of the traffic plan, the traffic plan will, will be determined, be, how, whatever site that they, the DPU chooses for them, all right, that's, but either way, we're going to want some sort of traffic plan regardless, so it, it's.
It does look like everything on this want list from you guys is frankly, would be irrelevant, whether, whether it's, you know, 169 or 20.
Well, any.
Five equally.
Like, if we were going to, we were going to ask for an evacuation plan, the Route 20 site is less problematic in terms of evacuation, they're like, we wouldn't really need something like that versus the 169 site.
Through the chair. I, I, I sort of understand where Bill's coming from. If, what he's, what he's thinking is that we would be giving tacit approval to either site. I think that, I think that what we have to do is we have to go with what the LNG Committee has put forward right now, because we have to get this in front of, we have to get a host agreement together so that we're protected in case they approve either site.
Yeah, and remember, the motion here wasn't to, to sign off on anything or agree to anything. The motion was to authorize town council, Amy, to begin taking everything they've done, and the assessors to begin the process. We're not agreeing to anything.
If that's all it is, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think NEC has, NEC hasn't proposed anything. I think that the latest thing that.
That would be a discussion for, for a different day.
Right, that's something, yeah, so, this is a matter of just, we're going to.
If it's just to start the process.
Right, you're going to have to meet with Amy, she needs to come talk to us.
Okay, thank you.
I knew we were going.
Yeah, all right, all right, I'm good for them.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair has assigned motion, carries unanimously. Chief, would you please reach out to Amy?
She already knows.
Never mind, never mind.
I kind of, I already kind of talked to her, because, because the, the hearing started yesterday, and so I had talked to her on Friday and said, and asked her some questions and said, listen, you know, we should come in front of you guys, and, and she said that she was going to have the, she was going to talk to the other guy either Friday or Monday, but she hasn't gotten back to me and told me anything one way or the other yet.
All right, so in that case, Chief, would you let her know?
Frank, we keep, I get, I'm in the email.
Make sure she knows the vote.
Yeah.
Make sure she knows the vote, and, and, and so, yeah, we'd like to meet with her and really get this thing moving along. And I believe that was it, except for possibly a yellow envelope.
Just announced the next meeting.
There's no other business?
Nope.
Unknown?
Nope.
The next meeting, the next regular meeting will be Tuesday, number three, at 6:30 PM.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to enter an executive session under MGL, Chapter 38, Section 21, Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, LNG. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and to return to open session to effectuate any votes required for discussion if needed, and to adjourn.
Chair, that's so.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, and Chair does so declare, produced by a roll call vote. Ms. Spiewak?
Aye.
Ms. Borowski?
Aye.
Ms. Noel?
Aye.
Mr. McGrath?
Aye.
Chair has assigned motion, carries unanimously. We are now in executive session. We will come out of executive session solely for the purpose of adjournment unless there is action that needs to be taken based upon the conversation in executive session, which is more executive action, and then adjourn.